Go call. Everybody here. Everybody's here.
Yes, sir.
They're all paying up for the indication. Robert?
I will. You would, everybody bow your heads. Dear gracious God, we come to you this evening, Lord, and so thankful for this blessed day that you've given us. Thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon our families and each one of us. Father, we ask for guidance tonight in the meeting. Father, we ask that you help us do the city's business and do it to the best for the community here in Mount Pleasant and all present. Father, we just thank you for everything that you've done for us and continue to do in our lives daily. We ask that you bless us as we leave tonight and go back home to our families. Father, we ask that you protect and watch over us and then continue to watch, guide our steps. Let me give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name.
Frank, continue.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can those on Zoom hear good?
Thank goodness we weren't, you know, doing that at the inauguration.
Yeah. Can everybody hear us good?
Yes.
Okay, good.
First item is the approval of the minutes. Anybody have any any changes in the updates still?
A motion to approve the minute.
Ms. Barrier has a motion to approve the minutes. I'll second that motion. All in favor of approving the minutes in the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed. Motion passes, sir. All right. Don't have any real old business.
No, sir.
Don't have any people waiting to talk to us.
That's correct.
My new business.
Yes, sir.
We get to move on to design guidelines.
Okay. Well, I appreciate those that are present tonight and those that are on Zoom with us tonight. I think we're recording and everybody can hear. If you can't hear and you're on Zoom, please let me know. Um, in your package, you received kind of a review between the zoning ordinance and the design guidelines that I did put together. And if it's okay with the chairman, I guess we can just go over these item by item.
Yes, sir.
Um, that's it.
That's good, yeah.
And if y'all would, y'all can follow along. Yes, I'm gonna bring some of that. So it's the little packet that I prepared, Guidelines for Commercial Historic Buildings Review, dated January 26th. Y'all received it in your package. The first thing that I pointed out in the review was.
Hey, Robert?
Yes.
Sorry, just, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was muted, but I would love to go over these line by line, but I do want to preface. Yeah, again, that once we become the full historic zoning district board with adopted guidelines, we are eligible for somebody to come in and perfect these. So I do want to preface with that. But yes, I do want to go over line by line.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Is that the right understanding?
No.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes, I mean, that's, that's to my understanding, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Sorry, keep going.
Well, no problem. So the, the first item just was pulled from page two on Design Guidelines, and you can read along if you'd like. Issues addressed in this document include facade analysis, commercial architectural forms, facade improvements, windows and storefronts, cornices, parapets, and eaves, secondary elevations. Specifically, what I pointed out was paint and color. New construction in civic institutional buildings and conversion of residents for commercial use. Okay, so this is not covered in our zoning ordinance particularly, but the concern that I want to bring to the board's attention here is, because we've discussed it before, can we dictate and regulate paint and color? It's called out in our design guidelines. And if so, do we need to include a paint, paint section as indicated on the draft design guidelines, page 10E? Or should we just confer to, defer to the paint colors, I think in 10 and 11 identified, and I don't think it's colors particularly, because I've read both of those. They don't give any specific colors, 10 and 11 of the National or the Secretary of Interior.
I actually thought, I'm, I'm a little, um, so the packet you gave me, I'm looking at this right now, and I thought I was corresponding to this that you provided. Is that not correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so the issues addressed, I don't think are, are addressed on page two, but as far as the paint and color go, I feel like, again, zoning ordinance aside, the Historic Zoning Commission should provide like a free template of historic colors that go with the, the, the time period. You know, so it's like a free color suggestion based on traditional colors or paint advisory or whatever, but I don't think we're here to super, to be super restrictive. We're here to be helpful.
Yeah, and I understand. I mean, that's, that's kind of why I brought this to the attention of the board here is we do call it out in the design guidelines, the draft on page two, paint and color. Um, and we just need to determine really before we make a final draft and move forward with doing a public hearing to accept these guidelines, which would be the next step, and Corey can speak to that if anybody has any questions at a later, a later time. Uh, or we just strike that all together. Um, you know.
And you not do, if you don't have, obviously, paint and color, that's just broad. It sounds like to me that whatever you want to try to use, it just needs to be approved. So couldn't it just be where someone's gonna, wants to involve in paint, but then they have to come and present what it is they want to do? And then get approved at that point without any spectrum. I mean, could they not just do that and go, this is what I'd like to use? What do you think?
When we had that lady from, what was it, Main Street or whatever, sitting in with us, well, several months ago.
Alan, and I, I'm not sure who was speaking before.
That was Mr. Barnes, fine.
Yeah, it was me.
Frank. But we had talked about something kind of vague, but pointed.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I know that kind of.
It was vague. I remember it was vague.
It was vague, but it said, kind of brain it to us, but it should be of the period.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
But it was really, didn't pin anybody down.
That's correct, yes, sir. Um, I'm open for.
And that's what I was saying too, like, so on, not page two, because that's just like a summary, but page 16. There's a, a part that says Secretary of Interior Preservation, brief 11, paint colors. That part, or even another addition to paragraph four, or an addition of paragraph five, provides suggestive paint colors for the time period and the building type. But limited, not limited to, but including a kind of thing. And that might be something that our Main Street Committee could do, is to have a set of, a color chart of suggestions for paint colors down there. So if somebody comes down and they want to paint, we could always, working with them, the design committee on the the Main Street could have this and present to them. Yeah, we can certainly keep it, we can certainly keep it broad like that, you know, just the Main Street Committee for free colored suggestions and advisory. But I do feel like if these are historic guidelines, we might want to find a, a color palette, but I guess it depends on how broad we want to keep it until we have this person come in that really defines the guideline.
Yeah, I mean, this is pretty, this is pretty standard. It doesn't have any specific colors. It doesn't limit them to specific colors. It's just a, um, you know, a suggestion that they choose colors that are historic and with overall color schemes that complement the rest on the street. There's nothing specific about this at all as far as colors that I can see.
So do you think keep this brief number 11 and then somewhere add in to number four for a list of complementary acceptable colors, the Main, Mount Pleasant and Main Street Community? Or we can, we don't necessarily have to add it in there. We can just make sure that when we do, you know, when we do have new people coming in that, because I plan on the Main Street Committee meeting with them when they're, when people are going to, you know, to be doing that downtown in this district, so.
Okay, so let me, I, I, I hear the discussion and I completely understand what you're saying here. Okay, so you're wanting this board to govern paint and color, nothing specific, and then you want this board to point them in the direction of a non-governing board for suggested paint colors. Corey, can you speak to that?
My only comment on this is you can regulate paint and color like you're talking about, but I would, if you don't put it in your review about guidelines of what you're actually talking about, I think it's going to be hard to enforce it. And I think what Lindsay said, or Donna, I can't remember which one, said it earlier, but it makes sense if your historic zoning is based off of a certain time period, and that's the whole reason you're able to do this, to maybe go with colors that are attributed to that time period and make it super broad where you're not being restricted, but you have something you can send them to. I mean, I think if I would, if you wanted this other group to make the colors, I would still incorporate it by reference into the review guide, I guess. For the Secretary of Interior, the way they're included now would probably be fine.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be the, I mean, the Main Street Committee will be working with people that are working on the buildings down there, but it doesn't necessarily exclude it being the the zoning, you know, historical zoning committee either. Um, I'm not sure is, I, I'm just wondering if the Secretary of the Interior, if they have a list of colors.
They don't.
That might.
I've looked at, I've looked at the section that's called out in the design guidelines, 11. I've looked at 10, anything dealing with paint. I haven't found, I haven't been able to find a suggested palette of colors by the Secretary of Interior. Uh, I did, when I was, when I was researching this and putting this together, um, 11 is called out on whatever page, I think she said 16 on there, we'll go. Uh, 16.
16, and yeah, it, it's fairly broad enough that I then think we could add a sentence, and we can either determine a free color suggestion based on that time, even add a sentence to number four, or you know, additional discussion on paint colors, theme, Mount Pleasant and Main Street Community, or suggested historic blah, 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 blah. You know what I mean? And then it's still not restrictive, still broad enough, because the Secretary of Interior, I mean, it adds some plot to the, the document, and it, it's fairly broad, in my opinion.
I think they intentionally left it that way, not to dictate paint colors.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think on page, I think on page 10, you know, B, if we just refer that to page 16 and leave that, you know, as broad as it is and said that, you know, they have to be compatible to the rest of that district. I'm a little bit concerned about starting to recommend any specific colors.
Right.
If you leave it that broad, if they come before the committee and want to paint a big, hokudai building, or, you know, they would definitely without approve that.
So keep broad and.
Why someone on the street.
But if we go ahead down here, then you can't say yes or no.
HDC has ultimate authority to say yes or no.
Okay, yeah.
Wherever you're over the zoning committee. The what is a zoning, the zoning committee? That is a zoning, HDC. Historic zoning committee versus, oh, excuse me, over the zoning ordinance, and I'm.
The zoning ordinance don't, the zoning ordinance, Lindsay, the, the zoning ordinance don't even cover paints at all.
Yeah, they only, they're standing off, so.
I'm making a judgment, babe. Obviously, yeah.
As you'll see in the document, it's not covered by the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
So we can.
Corey, you think that the HDC should have final approval on paint colors?
Well, I'm saying, whatever you, you're, the HCC is determining what goes in the design guidelines, right? And the HCC is who issues the certificate of appropriate.
Right.
So make sure you're not like, make sure you have enough information that you can make a decision. Leave it as broad as you want, and so you have the discretion to say yes or no. And you're not relying on somebody else to make a decision and then it comes back to you.
Okay.
Which is what I'm saying.
So my notes on this is keep it broad, which is fine, not have a palette included, and refer to Secretary of Interior for um, their guidelines. Is that correct?
I think it works.
Yeah, we'll have HCC's final approval on paint colors and leave the verbiage broad, but as a committee, we'd have our back straight to be able to back up our decision you know, when it comes down to making a decision.
Okay.
That's how I heard it too, historic.
Okay. I mean, if there's no more discussion, we can move on to the next. I've, I've got notes and I think you're, you know, seems like everybody's comfortable with.
Mm-hmm.
That. So going down to the second red there, if installation of storm windows is necessary, see windows, page 72 regarding proper procedures, that's out of the design guidelines. Once again, this is not covered in the zoning ordinance. Storm windows can't be found in the zoning ordinance. Um, staff concern, do we need to include a window section identifying proper procedures? Because in the document, page 13, in the design guidelines, page 13, I think it's H. If you will follow along there, because the text that you see is straight out of the book.
Yeah.
Um, it says, see windows section on page 72 regarding proper procedures.
Where's 72?
I think 72 should be 21. 21 is the only other page that even addresses windows, I think.
Hey, you know, I've explained, I've explained this before. What this came from was from Collierville's um, design guidelines, and basically I did a lot of copying and pasting with it and to, to make it fit to ours, and obviously that um, there, it, it refers to their page 72, so I didn't, I don't know if, is this the whole design guideline, Robert?
This is all I've ever received. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, um, I obviously did not include that in in this, in, in our design guidelines. I don't know if we need to, I can look that up and see what it says, what their 72 section says. Um, but I don't know if it's necessary to do that, or.
No, I think necessary just to make it page 21, but from a historic standpoint, it's one thing, but from a, a logical standpoint, I mean, if businesses want and need to have storm windows, as long as it, or they can do some sort of triple pane or whatever that looks like the old ones, but I mean, you don't want to limit businesses from being more green or ecologically friendly or having, you know, sun, like, uh, things I don't have, energy efficient, you know, I, I don't feel like we should limit them to that either, but as long as it still looks within the historic period. I mean, it doesn't have to be, I mean, we're not a movie set. It's okay if there's a Starbucks cup under somebody's leg at the, you know, the finale of Game of Thrones, like, it, it just needs to have the feel. It doesn't have to be specific, but I mean, we're not a movie set. I feel like they should be able to have some energy efficient windows.
In the current guidelines that we have, if we want to make any specifics, we could then refer to page 21, and of course, there are ways to insulate from the inside as opposed to the outside. So they do have storm windows now that do fit on the interior. Uh, and that's an option, and if that's something we want to suggest, if we want to get real specific as far as storm windows, we could do that, maybe.
Yeah. Well, I'm with you. I, I don't think we want to get specific. I want, I want them to have as many options as possible, you know, so they're not taken over by the fact that they're having to redo a historic building, and we want to give them options that are still budget friendly, that fall within.
Agreed.
What.
Sure.
All right, well, I, I think our window section is good on page 21 then, I don't know.
Okay, my question to the board would be, do we strike that out of these guidelines?
I would say no strike, but I'm not, I'm just one board member. I'd say still keep them there because it provides options.
And just change it to see the window section on page 21.
21.
21.
21.
That's our personal note.
Robert, how does that work?
Works fine with maybe 21 don't cover storm windows.
Now, we don't have the windows and doors.
And you don't think it's broad enough to include on the, maybe add point G.
That was my, that was my note, that we don't really have procedures for storm windows on page 21, but as Lindsay said, I, do we, I, I think we want to leave it as broad as we possibly can.
So maybe there could be a broad sentence of, um, because, you know, a lot of businesses also get tax credits for being green, ecologically, you know, so maybe just add like a broad sentence on probably a lot of these, these points, you know, should you choose to use you know, ecologically, if that's the right word, friendly materials? Or, I, I don't know.
Donna, could you possibly review those guidelines that you're using from the other city and, and see what they specifically say about?
Yeah, I'll do that. I'll look it up and see what it says. Um, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that 21 would cover it because it's really the, the shape and size of the windows, um, which your storm windows would match those states, shapes and sizes, but I'll pull that up and look and see.
What I think.
So like on section C, when it says that windows top should be compatible with those spanning the district, should we also add, including storm windows or something that simple to to that particular?
That might work. Let me, let me pull, um, let me pull theirs up and see what they're referring to.
Well, and I also think, um, whether it's a general statement or just something listed somewhere else, I mean, anything like solar panels or that are going to make the city better and greener and as long as it's still, it doesn't have to be so specific to the historic district. You can still be progressive without losing the, the feel of it, I think.
And that might be something that we have when, um, when we have professionals come in to, that we might ask them about how we can integrate green um, with the historic, because there, there are ways to do it, and there are a lot of cities that have done it. I just don't know how they've done it.
Okay, I'm down with that.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not for sure. I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, just any questions?
Well, I'm not, I'm not really for sure on how to really proceed here. I thought we was trying to finalize the document so we could get this thing moving forward, going for the city commission with the um, overlay, but at this point, uh, hearing a discussion about getting a professional to come in and redo these.
Well, that's just further down, after we commit it again.
Then there's written a reason to even approve these or have, have opportunity to approve these.
That's not what we're saying, Robert. We're saying that after, we're, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna approve these and go with these to start with, but a, after we become a, um, a certified local government, there are grants that we are um, taking a look at that can redo these designs, have someone come in and redo them.
Yeah, I think the ones that we've established we can change immediately, we will and then approve, and the ones that, when we have a professional come in and look, we'll deal with those later. You know, but I think we can still go through a number of these.
Yeah, I, I think what we're trying to do, Robert, is, is, is put together our best shot.
Mm-hmm.
Over the facts, and then have, then present it to, you know, the county, the city council.
Yeah, we have to go, these, these have to go through a public hearing.
Right, I mean, yeah, I mean, with the steps that, I mean, we got from court.
These will have to go through a public hearing to receive approval.
Right, but it's, we want to give it our best shot so we don't have all.
Well, and you preface that the public hearing, becoming a Main Street Historic Zoning Commission, we have access to grants to perfect these guidelines. I mean, you got to preface it with that too, right? Yes, a, a public hearing, but there'll be a lot more questions if you don't say a professional's coming in to, to help perfect these.
And during, during the interim, are we going to enforce these guidelines?
We have to, yeah. That's why we want to go through them and give it our best shot.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Yeah, okay.
But that's why we want to, you know, do the, you know, kind of nitpicky thing. I don't want to call it nitpicky, but by my, my, so when we do have an open, you know, meeting, or, I mean, it's open, but when we put it up for a public discussion.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I can do whatever the board wants to do, but I'm putting a lot of effort into trying to nail down everything that's supposed to go in this document.
Yep.
And all I, all I'm really hearing is that we're not.
By line then.
Excuse me?
And the ones that we can push off to the grant side, you know, highlight and the ones we can do now, highlight green.
No, we're, I mean, we're doing them. I mean, I think we're all in line with what, what you're doing.
That's, that's fine.
And, and because we want to put our best foot forward.
Okay.
Because we don't want to be defending someone going, well, we looked at it, but we didn't change it. Yeah, we agree with you, but we didn't change it, instead of saying, we saw that, this is what we added.
Yeah. I, you know, like I said, we just, if, if y'all want me to move forward with defining these more, uh, and actually getting the document together, getting ready for an approval process, because we haven't got there yet. approval process, because we haven't got there yet. Um, so we can move forward, then that's, that's what I'll continue to do. That's why I'm taking these notes and trying to go through and figure out how to make these changes, uh, that we're discussing. So, I understand completely, and, uh, we'll just go with this and change this document and march it forward.
Right, yeah.
Sounds good, okay. Um, so what I took notes of on that third portion was, uh, that Donna, you're going to be checking with the, uh, paperwork that you might have, uh, seeing if there's any particulars to storefront or, uh, to storm window installation.
Right, I'll see what they, what they're referring to on page seventy-two.
Sounds good, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the next one unless, you know, anybody else has any questions on that. Um, "Window signs are also appropriate on the glazing of doors and on upper floor windows for separate building tenants," page twenty-three E. Okay? I realize that design guidelines can be more restrictive than what the zoning ordinance is. And this is not being really more restrictive, so that's why I wanted to bring this to point tonight. So in the zoning ordinance, it says window signs are permitted on the first floor of buildings, provided they cover no more than twenty percent of the gross glass area on any one side of the building, or five percent in CDT and CN districts. Window signs shall not be eliminated. So in this case, I found that our zoning ordinance was actually more restrictive than what our guidelines are. So Cory, if, if you could just speak to this, give me some clarification, uh, because the way I understand it, that the historic guy, or the historic guidelines can be more restrictive, but in this particular instance, it appears that the zoning ordinance is more restrictive.
The state statute in our references in just a second says that there, if there is conflict, then the guidelines would control. So I would say for practical purposes, you would, at, at the minimum, want your designer view guidelines to match, um, to make sure that what you're adding, you're adding something with the designer view guidelines and not removing something.
And working together. Okay, let, let me throw this scenario out. Like, for example, the Hamilton Building is being redone and there will be some top floor possibly lofts, but you never know what it will be. Say, for instance, it is a business and they want a sign up there. Would their sign have to be on the bottom level or do we need to make a, the sign guidelines, a square footage of the print? Kind of thing, like.
Me.
Or that might not make, mean anything. I'm new to all this, but.
Hmm.
And we'll actually, we'll actually cover that a little more in depth in another section, but I just, I just need, uh, what I really need, I just wanted, uh, some direction there, um, because the, um, zoning ordinance actually just restricts it to the first floor, but the design guidelines allow glazing or window signs, uh, in the upper section. And I think if I.
Is there any place else in town that has like businesses that would be in the upper floors? Other than downtown?
Well, if development goes down Bluegrass or development goes other places.
Downtown though, that's still downtown. That's what I'm saying. Is there, you know, in, in the, outside of this commercial district, are there any buildings that, that have upper floors and that there would be separate businesses up there? Because.
That I know of.
I'm just, I'm just wondering why, um, the, um, why in the god, in the, um, the codes that they, they limited it to downstairs, the, the signage?
The window signage? I understand what you're saying. Um, well, you take into account, no, there's no building that I'm aware of right now, uh, that has an upper level that would use a business, but if you come, you know, if somebody comes in, wants to develop a commercial center, um, then you would almost, without that criteria in the zoning ordinance, if upper levels are rented out as office spaces, office spaces, then you would have allowances for window signs on every one of those. Whereas in the zoning ordinance, if you go to like the development of a commercial center or, uh, office, uh, multi-level office place, we require them to put monument signs or directional signs telling you what businesses exist here instead of having window signs everywhere on the building.
Like a directory inside the main.
Yes, yeah. I mean, that, that would be, that, that's the reason that text was included in the zoning ordinance specifically, is to keep people from doing that, uh, in, in those multi-level office spaces or commercial centers or anything that might house a business upstairs.
Initially downtown, uh.
Well, and I, I, that makes sense, you know, I, I like that. I wouldn't want signs everywhere either. Um, two levels is, is different than a skyscraper or five levels, but so say the zoning ordinance is more restrictive and there happens to be a business that wants to put a sign on their second floor, how do we handle that? Just case by case basis?
Well, I don't think, go ahead Cory.
Sorry, I was mistaken earlier. So I went back and looked at the statue and it says that your historic zoning or historic zoning guidelines, um, are superimposed over the regular zoning. So if there is a conflict, the provisions of your historic zoning will apply. So if you want it to stay the way it is, that's fine, just as long as you are comfortable with, this will control. What you put in these guidelines will control over this zone. You're trumping this.
And that's. Well, I appreciate that input because that's kind of what I was thinking. So I'm okay with that. I just wanted clarification. As long as the board is comfortable with having window signage, uh, upper level business in our downtown historic area, that's perfectly fine. I just wanted some clarification on it. And, and Cory, you just gave it to me. So I'm good with that particular section of it. If the board's good with that particular section of it.
The only one I can think of right now would be the loft. Um, if we, you know, um, we have people that come into town that are staying at the loft and it's, the way that it works with Airbnb is I have to get, I, um, I send them a message with directions and how to get in and that type of thing, but there's nothing identifying the loft upstairs over the, um, uh, the coffee shop. So if, you know, I, I mean, I don't have, we don't have any plans of putting anything up there, but if I had, if somebody had a business up there, I think that it would be good to somehow be able to identify it.
Well, and, and the, our historic zoning commission guidelines supersede the zoning ordinance, which only talks about the first floor, so we could approve that on a case by case basis.
Well, if we, if we take these as they are, then they can put them in the upstairs windows.
That's correct, yeah.
Uh-huh.
That's correct, and I agree. I'm in agreement with it. I think Cory clarified, uh, clarified it. Um, so I just, as long as the board's, you know, of consensus to leave it in there, that's perfectly fine.
I, this might be miniscule, but why, um, under number page twenty-three, each of the two signs for a business should be of a different height? Like, fix that. That's too specific. If we're getting that specific, that might be for somebody else to say. I'm just, I'm just reading as we go along. I don't know where you are. Page twenty-three on the guidelines, um, twenty-three dot.
See under the number, correct?
Yes, the end of the number. I mean, I feel like that's restrictive.
So basically, what they're saying is that if you're going to have two signs, one should be, you can have a window sign and a hanging sign, or you can have a window sign and a canopy sign, but not two window signs or two canopy signs or two hanging signs.
Okay, well, yeah, I certainly didn't read it that way. I just, in my head, I'm on the corner and I want both my signs to look alike, you know, or, but yes, I wasn't thinking about the window.
Okay, I guess moving on.
And somebody knows the, the background of it.
But the next thing says building dump on their lots are allowed signs on both frontages. So that would be, that would allow that. So you can have two of the same signs, type signs.
Is everybody ready to move on?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, sure.
So the next, um, item is hanging signs designed for installation under an awning, canopy, porch, overhang, marquee. Hanging signs may be perpendicular or parallel to a building. The bottom of a hanging sign that's perpendicular to the building and hangs under an awning, canopy, or marquee shall be no less than seven feet above the sidewalk. Shall be no less than seven feet above the sidewalk. I don't think there's no contradiction here. Uh, I just reread it again. The last sentence there, shall be no less than seven feet above the sidewalk. Um, our zoning ordinance, uh, don't call them hanging signs. They call them suspended signs. They're the same, meet the same criteria. Um, but, um, if you look at D, under our zoning, uh, ordinance section, shall be at least ten feet above any sidewalk, parking lot, driveway, or other vehicle or pedestrian way. So at first, when I read that, I was thinking that that was saying. Okay. I didn't see the no less there. Uh, all I seen was seven feet above the sidewalk. Um, then the zoning ordinance says, shall be at least ten feet above the sidewalk, but according to what Cory said, will it go, uh, as long as it meets that seven foot criteria, it don't matter if it meets the zoning ordinance. Am I correct, Cory?
Assuming that that's a conflict, then yes, you'd be trapped.
Okay. I think we can just. Go ahead.
What about, um, the, uh, so whatever, a one suspended sign allowed for entrance? And the sign may have a copy on both, both sides, you know, it goes back to those corner buildings with only one entrance, but they're still on the corner.
Yeah, but they wouldn't have a canopy on both sides. They, and that goes, yeah. I see. They can still have the sign, but not, they can have a sign, but it wouldn't be a hanging sign under a canopy.
Okay. No conflict there. I don't, I don't, I don't see conflict there, so we'll move on, I guess, unless anybody wants to discuss that further.
Nope.
The next one, window signs should obscure no more than fifteen percent of the window glass. That's out of the design guidelines. Of course, I think Cory answered, you know, when she answered earlier, it really don't matter, I don't think, what zoning ordinance is speaking to here. It says window signs are permitted on first floor buildings, provided they cover no more than twenty percent, reducing it to five percent in the downtown historic district. But according to Cory earlier, uh, if there's a conflict, then the, um, the guidelines would supersede. So, uh, I don't think that, I think that's a non-issue as well, if I'm correct.
Basically five percent of each window. They have five windows. It can go up to the twenty percent total, or that's how I read it.
I don't think, I don't think there's a conflict there, and if there is, then the design guidelines supersede zoning ordinance anyway. And the design guidelines specifically say should obscure no more than fifteen percent of the window glass.
Right.
So I think that, that's what we go with. It's in the design guidelines and it supersedes the zoning ordinance, so that's what we go with.
Hey, Robert, can you, uh, write down, I guess, on your notes that it's, uh, TCA thirteen seven four oh two that I'm looking at?
TCA?
I'm getting in mind, but I'm anticipating us trying to analyze this later on. So that's what I'm referencing. That's the state law I'm referencing.
Uh, could you, could you repeat it again, please?
Thirteen dash seven dash four oh two.
I've got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess moving on to the next one. Wall signs should not be painted directly on the surface of historic masonry walls if the wall has not been previously painted. Then you move on to the zoning ordinance. It's long text. Uh, wall signs in commercial industrial districts shall be allowed subject to the following limitations. Wall sign may be installed or painted only on a building wall of a principal building, as defined in ordinance, may be on any side of the building. The total amount of signs per wall of buildings shall not exceed one square foot per linear foot of the wall to which the sign is to be attached plus a yard varnish, so on and so forth. That's not specific, uh, that's not going to speak to downtown, so I won't read all of that. C, for a wall of a building in a commercial or an industrial district faces and is, and is within one hundred feet of a residential district, the size and lighting limitations applicable to institutional uses in that zoning district shall apply to the signs on the wall only. Here's the main concern, uh, that I had. Uh, so it is allowed in zoning ordinance, and we already know that the guideline text will supersede the zoning ordinance. So moving beyond that, it is allowed, would this prohibit murals? And if not, should we address murals? Um, and the reason I brought that up is, an historic building in our downtown area currently has a beautiful mural.
Yeah.
Um, but our text says in the guidelines that wall signs should not be painted directly on the surface of historic masonry walls if the wall has not been previously painted. So, which brings to point, who's going to take into account of all the buildings that have been previously painted?
The code department, I mean, uh.
Or if we're not opposed to murals and like even retouching up the Williams drugstore, we could add something there of, under the, the direction or whatever, the historic zoning committee. Think that progress the city, I mean, I don't know that they're verbiage, but again, I don't want to be too restrictive as long as it falls, as long as it fits with the aesthetic.
I think that for murals, that we need to have, the, the historic zoning commi- commission needs to have final say on the mural, um, and that it's appropriateness, and I know that that is, that can, but we don't want somebody, we had this come up before, we don't want somebody to come down here and paint a, um, Confederate flag on the side of a building. So I think that, that this committee needs to have some kind of final approval on mur- on murals.
Cory?
The mural.
Yeah.
They had to get approved for that mural, but, but.
Especially because you're, you're a government, uh, committee who would be regulating the content of what goes on a building. So whatever you decide to do, it has to be really closely tied to the aesthetic and the historical significance of what you're regulating, um, which I can see a problem with like, you know, the Confederate flag. That's something we want to keep out.
But the historical significance is there for many people.
Right, and so that, you know, we, Robert and I have talked about this, that nauseam with the, with the city's, uh, like, with the city's diet ordinance, because you do like, you know, you want these murals, but you can't really tell people what they can and can't put up there unless you are really careful. And so having a blanket, no murals is easier from a legal. from a legal perspective, but if you would like to allow mural, then maybe you stick with what the, the city's zoning ordinance has, or maybe add something that you can tie back to the historical significance, I just don't know what that is, that's gonna be hard to boardsmith that.
Like, in no murals without prior approval from the Historic Zoning Committee showing the benefit of having this, 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 or this, that benefit could be a scavenger hunt to bring the city together, or a historical, you know, like, to keep it broad enough, I feel like.
You definitely, it's definitely something you can regulate under this, it just, you have to be careful with it, and I don't know the answer to it, that's really, I just needed to put out there, the legal risk here is that you could be regulating content, which is a big no-no for it all.
Cory, can we check with some other, you know, historic towns that, that have murals, that are doing murals, and see how they regu, if they regulate it anyway?
Yeah, and I was thinking, like, you know, the city of Columbia definitely has more historic buildings, I think that they have it included in the sign regulation, but I can find that out, but.
Yeah, also, London, Tennessee has a lot of, a lot of those also, but I think if, if we, we can't control the content, then, you know, if we're gonna get into any kind of legal issues, 'cause I think we definitely would wanna control the content, yeah, that's that's a rule, I think that's a decision we're gonna make, and I, you know, I, I don't like, I don't think we wanna get into any legal controversies, but I think we do definitely wanna control the content.
Well, and I think there has to be a way to do it, because other towns are doing it, you know, so, there may be some, check with Columbia and see if they have any wording, legal wording in there that, you know, that gives them that.
All right, Columbia's right here, but it's long.
When, when I say the content, I mean, I really am talking about, like, what, what is the mural of, but you can definitely, without any questions, regulate, you know, the size, where they can be placed, you know, the color, since you're already doing that with the historic zoning, things like that, and you can regulate content if it's very, very closely tied with your government purpose, so, it's possible, I'll, I'll look at Columbia's and.
Okay.
Check London, too, I guess, and see what they've got.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess, looks like we maybe got some homework, several of us, and that was all, I do need everybody's suggestions, though, because if I come in here and put the document together, then I'm ready to move forward with it, so, if, if y'all wanna add your suggestions, you know, you can email them to me ahead of time, or we can discuss them again at a further meeting, but all that I ask the board is that you come with some hard definitive stuff that we wanna see in this book, so we can, we can move forward.
The agenda you provided today, we've answered most of them, and then some of them will be whenever that grant comes, and then there's a couple we have to look up, so, I think we're, we're really close.
Okay. That's all I can do, so I just, I just asked that, you know, if you got suggestions, send them my way, so I'm not trying to put this whole thing together.
Well, I know, I mean, 'cause you're wanting, you know, I, I was thinking we were real close to moving forward this thing, you know, so, and I think you were, too, you know, moving it to the next level.
Um, I think we are.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't have anything else to add, that was kind of the discussion tonight, so, as far as I was gonna.
Okay. If that's it, we're just waiting on Don.
Well, if there's discussion, like, Don's gonna do her research, Cory's gonna do hers, so, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that.
The doctor made a motion to adjourn, Ms. Barrier, taking in the motion, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Everybody.
Yeah.